Healthy, positive.
And it's, you know, it's a great activity and we all enjoy it. What else do we have to do on Saturday morning?
The residents say all the volunteerism and beautification have already changed the neighborhood.
When other people come to volunteer and help build and beautify our community, we have no objection, nothing else but to get out and say, "Let's go help the volunteers."
Who would have thought that a place to plant vegetables, a spiffier playground, and paint it onings could make such a difference to the neighborhood spirit? I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Kaiser Permanente does several of these projects a year in Southern California. The transgender community gets set for its biggest local job fair of the year. Gil Reyes reports on some of the obstacles trans people face when looking for employment and the help they're receiving in breaking barriers.
He is now she and is looking to land a job. This may be tougher than you think.
How do we integrate into society? And of course, we don't want to hide our own uniqueness of being trans because we're here and we're not going anywhere.
Activist Queen Victoria Ortega helps transgender job seekers get ready for an important hiring fair. Fifty top companies will be there pledging to hire qualified transgender applicants. The city's transgender advisory council and other partners lend a hand.
Focusing on interviewing skills, preparing for the resume attire.
For those not part of this community, you may be shocked to discover how difficult it can be to land a job. The National Transgender Discrimination Survey found that unemployment among transgender people is twice as high as that of the general population. Discrimination is just one of the hurdles.
We could start off as something basic that most individuals won't have to worry is your identification, your name. We have to legally change our name and gender.
People transitioning usually have to pay $450 to the state to officially change their name and gender and also have to be extra careful when choosing references as they may have known them under a previous identity.
Call them up and talk to them first before you put their name on as a reference. And if they feel comfortable with that, then, you know, then you're good to go. But if the person doesn't respond positively or the way that you want, then I would suggest going to a different place.
Continue to come to the resource fairs. Stay connected with community. Keep going out, keep doing what you're doing because even showing up is a great step forward because sometimes it's difficult just to leave the house.
Helping to even the playing field for transgender job seekers. At LA Trade Tech College, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Top companies looking to hire include Hulu, 20th Century Fox, and the LAPD. The job fair takes place on Thursday, November 9th at West Hollywood Park Auditorium at 625 North San Vicente. An exhibition helps revive the past and bring to life art that was censored throughout the LA area. Art that represented Chicano artists. Rasha Goel has more.
This Murales Rebeldes, La Chicano y Chicana Murals Under Siege Exhibition represents not only the artistic talents of their creators, but the significance of artwork that was destroyed, removed, and whitewashed because of their narrative.
But the story that it tells here is the important role that those murals played in giving power and identity to a community and how that voice was taken away when those murals were erased essentially.
I think it's inspiring to see the next generation of artists and what this work means for the future. You know, and to see how their work has vanished for the meaning that their work has placed, you know, but what it means for the future of us as the next generation of Latino artists.
The exhibition is on display at La Plaza de Cultura y Artes in downtown LA and features eight murals from the 1970s. There are photos, remnants, and sketches left from some of those murals. Among the artists was Erenya Cervantes from Orange County, whose mural was whitewashed.
I think it's really unfortunate, you know, very unfortunate because, you know, you don't see that many murals like that, especially in Orange, in that area of Orange County.
Barbara Carrasco, whose mural has been in storage for over two decades, finally gets a chance to share her vision at Union Station. She had been asked to remove some images from her historical depiction of the city and she refused to.
I was just surprised that they would object to basic history. I was very, I was 26 when I started and I was very, very surprised.
And the fact that they are being destroyed and aren't protected the way they should be means a lot about what people think about our culture, right? Because if they're not being preserved, then what does that say to our culture? It's not being preserved either.
But through this exhibition, those lost pieces are now revived and parts of historic visions that can be shared. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
The exhibition at La Plaza de Cultura runs through February. And another exhibit in Hollywood showcases even more Latino culture, specifically their contributions to movie history. The Latinos in Hollywood exhibit offers a few movie history lessons, even for city leaders. Anna Marcos has more.
She is Mexican.
Really?
LA City Controller Ron Galperin is having his mind blown after finding out the late movie star Rita Hayworth had Mexican blood. And here's another mind blower.
Wonder Woman, yeah.
Really?
Yes, yes.
Yes, the original Wonder Woman Linda Carter also hails from south of the border. The Latinos in Hollywood exhibit and party was full of juicy morsels of Tinseltown's Hispanic legacy.
Latinos have played an overall very, very positive and pivotal part of history by inventing photo paper on which these photographs are now part of history. We also, Mexicans invented color TV.
The exhibit is now in its fourth year and it also provides a great reason to throw a fiesta put on by Latino Heritage LA.
And as we all know, Latino heritage is Los Angeles heritage. Los Angeles heritage is Latino heritage.
But in spite of the party atmosphere, there is also a serious reason for the exhibit.
Being in this industry is really difficult, no matter who you are, but it has been quite difficult for Latinos to stay upfront 100%. We do find a lot of Latinos in front of the camera, but we need more Latinos who are calling the shots.
But in this exhibit at least, Hollywood Latinos are front and center and calling the shots. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
And of course, there was Latin jazz, salsa, and dancing afterward. In South LA, a Mexican tradition celebrating death was so lively, you could feel it in your bones. Gil Reyes reports from Dia de las Muertas festivities where one council member really got into the spirit.
On Day of the Dead, we saw a different side to South LA Council Member Curran Price.
We're here at South Park in the Manhattan District celebrating Dia de los Muertos. It's an exciting celebration and it's a family event. Face painting, things for kids and adults. It's just a lot of fun.
Day of the Dead, or Dia de los Muertos, traditionally takes place on November 2nd. But here in LA, the Mexican custom dating back thousands of years can sometimes last throughout the month. It's a time to honor loved ones who passed away. People built altars adorned with bread, marigold flowers, and photos of the dearly departed. Latin R&B, cumbia, Mexican mariachi, and Cuban changuí kept the party spirited.
They've got folks up moving and dancing. You know, we're excited about that.
Music so pumping, it was enough to raise the dead. From Dia de los Muertos in South Park in South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
November 2nd may have passed, but Dia de los Muertos lives on as more than 100 painters pay homage to the dearly departed through most of November. Gil Reyes shows us their curious work from Plaza de la Raza.
Check out El Velorio, a three-week Dia de los Muertos exhibit taking place at Plaza de la Raza in Lincoln Park. Curator Antonio Palayo launched the annual event in 2009 to help expose the works of up and coming artists.
And what happened this year, I decided to give a wooden coffin to every single artist and have every single artist, you know, give their own interpretation of Day of the Dead with the theme of this year of Three Skulls.
The Three Skulls representing music, art, and culture. 110 artists are featured. Money raised on opening night will benefit Plaza de la Raza. The center offers after-school arts education and mentorship programs for Eastside youth.
As a child, I came to the Plaza de la Raza and took lessons here as a kid, you know, from music to art and things like that. So it's good to come back here and represent with other artists.
It trickles down to the youth and gives those in upcoming artistic genres hope to maybe be featured. This is my first time, so I'm very excited to be part of this.
El Velorio runs through November 25th. At Plaza de la Raza, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
There was a charge to attend opening night festivities, but the exhibit is now free. Check it out at Plaza de la Raza at 3540 North Mission Road in Lincoln Park. Well, downtown's historic theaters can now be seen in a whole new light. The city goes pink to raise awareness for breast cancer research and volunteers help make LA greener and cooler. All these stories in City Beat. Councilmember Jose Huizar and his Bringing Back Broadway initiative hosted a tour of nine historic buildings along Broadway, once the entertainment and retail capital of LA, to highlight Bringing Back Broadway's recently completed Broadway facade lighting program. The program provided major classic lighting upgrades through a $750,000 grant. The lighting program transformed the Bradbury Building, million-dollar theater David Gray Building, and others. Councilmember Nuri Martinez recently recognized the Pink Patch Project with a gathering outside City Hall. The Pink Patch Project is a collaborative effort between the LA County Chiefs Association and public safety agencies across the nation to raise awareness and raise funds for breast cancer research. This past year, the organization raised $325,000 across the nation with the majority of the funds going to City of Hope. So far, 250 agencies nationwide have partnered with the Pink Patch Project, with the majority of them being in LA County.
This issue affects the entire family when someone's affected by cancer. So this is just another way of our law enforcement agencies coming together to promote Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Our goal is to raise awareness and find a cure for cancer because everybody has a story to tell.
The community and the Department of Wreckin Parks came out recently to plant 54 trees at Lincoln Park. Officials will be planting more than 350 trees in eight parks throughout East LA. Officials say many trees have been lost over the years for various reasons. The new trees will help cool down the city and make the parks more enjoyable for years to come.
And so it's really important that we team up with Wreckin Parks to help them start the replanting process so that our kids can have a city just as green and beautiful as the one that our parents gave us.
Pico Union is a park poor area of the city with a lack of trees and green spaces. But the neighborhood just got a jolt of green power as neighborhood groups, a business, and the City Council District One office gave it a little tree therapy. Anna Marcos takes us there.
It takes some elbow grease to pound some 50 trees and their support poles into the ground, but it's about to make this Pico Union neighborhood shadier, prettier, and more earth-friendly.
So what's this like?
What's this like? It's very fun, very proactive.
But I see that it's also very hard.
You may call it hard, but I don't. It's just a little bit of extra work, that's it.
The tree planting, a joint project by the Koreatown Youth and Community Center, the city, and the Doubletree Hilton, which provided the laborers. These hotel workers by day have now turned volunteer earthhuggers and tree planters.
You know, it's really good feeling when, you know, you're helping a community to go green and, you know, getting rid of all the submissions.
So it's worth all that sweat I see on your face?
It's worth all that sweat, yeah, of course.
We are a little low on like green space in this community of Pico Union. So for us, the council member is very important to start planting more trees.
And it touches your heart because you know you're making a difference.
These volunteers are greening the neighborhood, but they're not the only ones. One longtime resident has been planting a lot of the trees that you already see in this neighborhood for years. Jorge Alvarez not only plants trees, he waters them regularly.
And I really wish in my heart if somebody can feel the, how good it is, take care of something that God gives to us. Together, we got like a bond, the tree and the person, we are bound together.
Planting trees is modeling the future. You establish a foundation, you establish roots, and once those roots go down, you're never telling what's going to grow up and cover this community with safety and with shade and with hope.
It looks like hope in this corner of Pico Union will soon bloom and bear plenty of fruit. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The Koreatown Youth and Community Center, which helped run the event, also runs events for trash litter and bulky item pickup, weed abatement, tree maintenance, and more. Let's celebrate our war veterans aboard the Battleship Iowa, explore popular movie locations during a downtown LA scavenger hunt, and hit the ground running for a good cause. All this and this week's things to do. Battleship Iowa and Black Knight Patrol present the second annual Veterans Day Music Festival. So get on board and help thank all those who served with a good time on the harbor. Admission to the festival is free and all are welcome. Activities include an opening ceremony honoring veterans with colors, wreath, and local elected officials, including Councilman Joe Buscaino, live music, food, and carnival games. It all takes place November 11th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. on the Battleship Iowa in San Pedro. Join Watson Adventures on a unique movie-themed scavenger hunt. Discover a thrilling mix of LA's new and old as you visit locations featured in such films as Speed, Wedding Crashers, LA Story, Pretty Woman, Vertigo, Raging Bull, and Beverly Hills Cop. You'll explore the artwork of Pershing Square, the sights around the Central Library, strange figures outside a classic movie palace, the Grand Central Market, the stunning Bradbury Building, and much more. It all happens November 11th from 2 to 4 p.m. at Pershing Square. For more, visit watsonadventures.com. Come on out for the 10th Annual Heroes of Hope Race for Brain Tumor Research. The amazing day includes a fast and flat 5K, 10K, and iDance for a Cure Kids Fun Run, plus Kid Zone Wellness Expo, food, and drinks galore. Thousands are expected to participate in the event, including runners and walkers, and guest appearances by professional athletes, brain tumor survivors, prominent healthcare professionals, and celebrities, all in the name of finding a cure. It all takes place Sunday, November 12th from 8 a.m. to 11 a.m. at Dockwiler State Beach in Playa del Rey. For more, visit whizathon.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at LA this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Good morning, good morning. If everybody would please, if you would please take your seats. It is Wednesday, November 8th. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonham, Buscaino, Sadio, Angler, Harris, Dawson, Huizar, Caress, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Krikorian moves. Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscaino moves and Mr. Blumenfield seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to send all items forthwith today.
Without objection, so ordered.
Very good, sir. Further, there's been a request to continue items 1A, 1C, and 1D to November 22nd. And there has also been a request to continue items 10 and 11. To November 22nd. And there has also been a request to continue items 10 and 11 to January 9, again, January 9, 2018.
So ordered. Continue.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 11 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items. However, Mr. President, item 9 was a matter that was scheduled in error and no action should be taken on the matter.
Okay. So without objection, so ordered. Continue.
That brings us to items 12 through 26. There are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 17, 18, 19, and 25 have been posted and circulated and are now before council for their consideration. Also, please note that item 25 contains a resolution for adoption.
Okay, specials. Any specials? Let's prepare to vote on these. Okay, I've been informed we need to hold items 13 and 21. So let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Continue, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Hold on. Mr. Buscagino.
Forthwith, please.
Twenty-two. In fact, all items are going forthwith today. All right, Mr. Clerk.
Very good, sir. And, Mr. President, items 12 and 14 are ordinances, and they'll go over for a second reading unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Thank you.
Items 27 through 35 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. You have cards on these items?
Mr. President, we have cards on all items.
Okay. Can somebody look at his mic? We're having some technical difficulties. Okay, let's continue.
Items 36 and 37 are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I'll defer to Mr. Krikorian. We're having...
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 36 and 37 have both been considered by Budget and Finance, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. These are both, in one case, it's, well, in both cases, it's a, they are settlements that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Okay, I see no questions or concerns from the members. Let's prepare, let's prepare to vote on this. But before that, if I could have the clerk read the settlement.
For item 36 in the case entitled "City of Los Angeles at All versus Park West Landscape Incorporated at All," there is a recommendation to accept $200,000 in settlement. And for item 37 in the case entitled "Jamie McBride versus City of Los Angeles at All," there is a recommendation to expend $1.5 million plus accrued interest in judgment.
Thank you. Continue. Let's, oh, we need to vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President.
Hold on one second, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Bonnet?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Corres and I had an amending motion circulating for item 15, which got passed in the last batch. If we could reconsider item 15 and hold it on the desk until we circulate the motion.
Let's vote on reconsideration for item 15. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, and we'll dispense with that later. Mr. Bonnet, that brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
Mr. Krikorian, I just want to take a moment and check on our sound before I recognize you. Okay, why don't, Mr. Krikorian, we start with you for a very, very special presentation? So the floor is yours.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President. It's a great honor, members, to begin our annual commemoration of Veterans Day with all of you again today. And I'd like to start by recognizing the veterans who are sitting here with us in the first two rows. If you'll all please join me in thanking them for their service and welcoming them to City Hall. In Washington and in state capitals and town squares throughout our country, there are majestic monuments that are constructed to honor people who we've all heard of, people who are military leaders or political leaders who in some way have bent the arc of history, have defended our country against great threats, have shaped the direction that our country has gone in. But Veterans Day is a day that we can remember that all of those grand achievements by the names, famous people that we know, all of them were dependent upon the sacrifice by people whose name history doesn't mark. The grocers, the mail carriers, the teachers, the nurses, the mechanics, and the students who were asked by their country to rise to the occasion. And again and again, they did. They were ordinary Americans who could have stayed home and lived a very comfortable life with their families and friends, but instead, they answered our country's call and stepped up to serve a greater cause. And in doing so, all sacrificed some, and some sacrificed all. Everyone who's ever donned our country's uniform in war and in peacetime as well has gained a place in a long and strong chain of sacrifice that connects one generation of ordinary Americans to the next. It's a chain that began when the farmers of Concord put aside their pitchforks and picked up their muskets and forced the king's troops to retreat at the North Bridge. It's a chain that extended through Gettysburg, through Okinawa, and Incheon, and Hei San. And it is a chain that continues to this day in the chaos and violence that we see in dark corners of the world where people unnoticed are continuing to sacrifice daily for our country. And these days, it's not just frontline soldiers, because everywhere in the world where people are wearing the uniform of this country, there are threats. They're in danger. So each of you veterans here today, and every other American who's formed a link in that chain across all the wars and all the generations, you've played an essential part in building the nation that we all love. Over the course of our history, the world has certainly changed, and the threats to our country have changed, and the missions of our armed forces have changed as well. But the valor, the dignity, and the courage of the men and women in uniform remain the same, and so does the strength of their families who sacrifice along with them. The veterans who are honoring, who we are honoring here today have become our teachers. Through their service, they remind us of the extraordinary potential of ordinary Americans. They remind us of the principles for which our country stands, and they remind us of the courage and commitment and sacrifice necessary to maintain those principles. They remind us both of the blessings we enjoy and the cost we must all bear as citizens of the last best hope of earth. We owe them a debt which we can never fully repay, but which we must always strive to repay. We owe them decent health care. We owe them jobs. We owe them education. We need to address the outrageous problem of homeless veterans. We need to help all of our veterans heal their emotional scars. And especially, we owe them our respect, not just on Veterans Day, not just on Memorial Day, but every day. And, members, above all else, we owe them our commitment to dedicate ourselves again to the never-finished work of building a nation that continues to be worthy of their sacrifice. So, thank you all for participating. And I want to thank you all, members, for the work that you've done in identifying these extraordinary individuals who we're about to recognize today. As we go through and hear the stories of their service in the military, we'll also hear of the service that they've done when they've returned. Service to their families, service to their neighborhoods, service to our cities, service to our nation in other capacities. And it's always an inspiring and an enriching moment when we can take the time to recognize that kind of service. So, I am going to begin, we're going to go in numerical order. Since Mr. Sadio would normally be first, but is not with us, I will take the privilege of honoring his, of recognizing his honoree. And so, veterans, as we go through in numerical order by council districts, I'd ask you to join your council member at their desks, if that, if you can do that. If not, if you would prefer, the council member can join you here. But we'll start with Mr. Sadio and Council District 1. And actually, you can join me up here. You can join me up here, since he's not here. So, it's a, it's a pleasure and honor for me, on behalf of Mr. Sadio, to recognize Mark Cridos. Mark joined the United States Navy in 1990. Here in the ti... Seems like just yesterday. He earned the titles of First Command onboard on the USS Shasta, followed by Reserve Navy Unit MIU-WU-105, and served in the military police in support of homeland defense. He was also part of the Mobile Inshore Undersea Warfare Unit, ACU-1 Assault Craft Unit, IBU-16 Squadron 11, and is this MSRON?
MSRON 13.
MSRON 13. He's served several campaigns, including Desert Storm, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation Enduring Freedom, and a peacekeeping mission in the Horn of Africa. He's very grateful, as I know all of these veterans are, for his country that he was able to serve, and also for the support of his family, without which none of these folks would be able to do what they do. He's been blessed to have the love and understanding of a strong family bond with his beautiful wife Maggie and his daughters Paulina and Priscilla. And with them by his side, it's how he stays grounded and blessed, along with his faith. And we want to thank Mark for his service and congratulate him on being the Veteran of the Year for CD1.
Congratulations.
Thank you, council member.
Congratulations. I have this to present to you. Now, for CD2, I'm pleased to recognize my honoree, Ernie Moscoso. Ernie was born and raised in Los Angeles and served in the United States Army during the Vietnam War. In 1969, Ernie was among the hundreds of thousands of men and women who were called to service in Vietnam. He reported for basic at Fort Ord, then went on to Field Artillery Officer Candidate School. He quickly rose up to the rank of Second Lieutenant in the Army Field Artillery. Returning to Fort Ord in 1970, Ernie was assigned to train incoming service members as the firing range officer in charge and in basic rifle marksmanship. Soon after that, Ernie took on a really extraordinary position as the executive officer and honor guard officer in charge, who had the responsibility of notifying the families of brave soldiers whose lives were lost in the war, and in particular, individuals who were identified as POWs or MIA's. And I'm sure you can all imagine the difficulty of that job, especially during the Vietnam War, when so many were lost and so many were taken prisoner and missing in action. After returning from his service in the Army, Ernie married his college sweetheart Karen in 1974, almost right after you left, right after you got out. And together, they've lived in North Hollywood and have been great contributors to the North Hollywood community for nearly four decades. Ernie has really been a phenomenal contributor to education in the San Fernando Valley, to community building, to public safety. From 1979 to 1984, he was an LAPD Crime Prevention Specialist, volunteer facilitator and organizer for Neighborhood Watch meetings throughout North Hollywood Division. And then he gave so much to our schools as President of Parents for Kids at Vena Avenue Elementary School, President of Porter Middle School Magnet Parent Group, President of Rusita High School Magnet Parent Group, and the PTA. He was a member of the North Hollywood Poly Instructional Cabinet, a member of the Learn Annenberg Poly Grant Committee, member of LAUSD Student Service Committee, and a participant on the Forum on Parent Enrollment at Johns Hopkins University. In 2002, Ernie became a founding member of the North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council, and has served throughout the 15-year history of the Neighborhood Council. And since 2010, he's been an enthusiastic, active, visionary leader of the North Hollywood Northeast Neighborhood Council as its president. I've gotten to know Ernie very well in pretty much anything that happens in North Hollywood, whether it has to do with traffic, whether it has to do with neighborhood cleanup, whether it has to do with our parks, investments in our infrastructure, anything that happens in North Hollywood somehow or another comes through Ernie or has Ernie's fingerprints on it. And it's a great honor for me to be able to congratulate him and thank him for his service in uniform, but his continuing service to our community since as well. Ernie, congratulations. And we'll go next to Council District 3 with Council Member Bob Blumenfield.
Thank you very much, Council Member Krikorian. Thank you for really putting and leading us in this incredible, incredibly important presentation. It is so important that we not only celebrate our veterans, but we thank them. So I want to just take a moment to thank everyone who has served. The freedoms that we enjoy, the democracy that we are enjoying is because of you, because you earned it and you kept it alive, and we appreciate that every day. So I'm honored today to have with me Lieutenant Colonel Edward Reynolds, who I've gotten to know over the years through his great community service in the West Valley. And he's here with his lovely wife Judy, who's here in the third row. Ed is an amazing guy. He is retired from the US Air Force. He was an Air Force officer for 22 years. He served in a variety of positions, including a navigator on air refueling tankers, air operations staff officer, missile targeting officer for MERVs. For those of you who don't know what a MERV is, it's a multiple independently targeted reentry vehicle. He was an intelligence officer in the Vietnam, during the Vietnam War in the Air Force. Lieutenant Colonel Reynolds also worked in the Pentagon for six years as an action officer. And while at the Pentagon, he introduced computer terminals to air staff and managed the US Air Force Inventory Database. While in the Air Force, he also accumulated over 5,000 flying hours, including 640 combat hours in 147 combat missions, which is pretty amazing. And he's all in one piece right now, which is, which is great. And following his service in the Air Force, he worked as an international IT management consultant at United Airlines, SRI International, and several other defense contractors. He then formed a service management consulting group for companies, and he spent time traveling the world. Since his retirement from active service, he has continued to support veterans by serving as the President of the Air Force Association Tennessee Ernie Ford Chapter in Sunnyvale, California, and later, as the President of the General Doolittle Chapter in Los Angeles. Lieutenant Colonel Reynolds is still very much active in the community. He's the leader of an amazing organization called Wings Over Wendy's, where they get veterans together for friendship and to break bread, and they talk about, talk about their lives and what's happened. And it's an organization that he's helped grow, that used to have just one chapter, Wings Over Wendy's, and now they're also in, have a chapter that meets in Tarzana. Lieutenant Colonel Reynolds is also the proud owner of a British MG car from the 1940s. As I said, he's an interesting guy. He's got a lot going on. He likes to bring the car to local car shows to show it off. If you see him at one of these events, make sure you say hello. I mentioned he's a worldly person. And a little, a little amazing fact about his worldliness is that it's quite literal in his case. He is one of 110 people that has been to every single country in the world, which is pretty amazing. And he's still here in one piece, as I mentioned. So it's my honor to present Lieutenant Colonel Reynolds with this certificate of recognition. Ed, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And surprisingly, Mr. Blumentfeld, after all that, Colonel still looks good in his uniform, too. It still fits. All right, we'll go next to Council District Four, and Council Member David Ruh.
Thank you, Council Member Krikorian. Today, I am honored to be here with Lieutenant Commander Fernando Rivera, who is the son of Cuban refugees, and who came to this country seeking peace and freedom. In 2001, Fernando moved to Los Angeles, and that same year, our country faced our greatest homeland attack in its history. While our nation reeled from the 9/11 attacks, Fernando stepped up and enlisted in the Navy. Since then, Fernando has been deployed to Kuwait, Iraq, Afghanistan, for Operation Enduring Freedom. He has traveled to 10 countries, serving in international coalitions to fight ISIS, and is currently assigned to the United States Central Command. But he has also had a huge impact here at home in Los Angeles. Fernando is not only a veteran of the Armed Forces, but a veteran of the creative industry, working, having worked in, for 20 years in television and film industry, and even winning an Emmy. In 2016, Fernando was elected Commander to the American Legion Hollywood Post 43, known as the Motion Picture Post. But more importantly, or historically, Fernando, at the, at the great age of 42, is the youngest Commander in the history of the American Legion. And with Fernando at the helm, the American Legion Post 43's membership has doubled, and has begun a beautiful restoration with a new movies theater and restored clubhouse for veterans, young and old. Fernando is a hero to our country, but he is a hero to his fellow veterans. Because of him, veterans returning to Los Angeles has an amazing American Legion post, where they can feel at home and meet with other veterans. Thank you Fernando Rivera, for all that you've done, and your continued service to this country. I am truly humbled and incredibly grateful to call you my neighbor in Council District Four. Thank you.
Next up is Council District Five, represented by Council Member Paul Kretz.
Well, thank you, Mr. Krikorian, and thank you for bringing the veterans here to be honored, as of course is well deserved. Now today, I'm pleased to honor Colonel Jack Rokar. He is unable at age 94, unfortunately, to join us during, due to recent health issues, but were joined by his neighbors Jeff Stodell, and his son Charlie, who is a wolf in the Boy Scouts. Jack answered the call to join the Armed Forces in 1940 at the age of 18, while enrolled as a freshman at the University of Nebraska. By 1943, he was commissioned as a Second Lieutenant in the Infantry. In 1944, he began active combat duty in the forests of southern Germany. Here, Jack served as a leader of an 81-millimeter mortar platoon in the 70th Infantry Division of the Army. He served a total of 39 months of active duty during World War II, serving in active combat in Germany and France. He was engaged in combat outside a German concentration camp at the time of its liberation by the Nazis, and helped to free areas of Germany and France held by the Nazis. He also was part of a group that used a tank to flush out an abandoned house along the road in the woods in Germany. The house is later discovered to have been a German Officers' Club, at which Adolf Hitler celebrated Christmas in 1941. After the war, the Colonel moved in 1952 to his house in West Los Angeles, where he's lived ever since. He entered the Army Reserves, where he was ultimately promoted to the rank of Colonel Infantry in 1968. And at the time of his retirement in 1976, he had served 28 years in active and reserve duty to his country. And he earned many awards, including the Combat Infantryman's Badge, the Meritorious Service Medal, the Bronze Star, and the Good Conduct Medal. And in 2015, France awarded him the rank of Chevalier in the French Legion of Honor for his sacrifice and his service to France during World War II. It was a difficult decision for Jack not to be here today, and he sent a note thanking everybody involved, and saying that being part of such a program would have been a true last wonderful act to my military career. The Stodell family lives two doors down from Jack, and Charlie here and Jack are good buddies, and Jack is one of the most beloved people in the neighborhood. So the family's decided to bring the celebration to Jack. And on Veterans Day, Charlie, his neighbors, and his Boy Scout troop will go to Jack's home and surprise him with this award. And the scouts will plant many, many flags along the street, and in front of Jack's home, and sing the National Anthem to him when they've completed the presentation. When Jack was told that he received this honor from the City of Los Angeles, he said, "You must understand something. I'm not a hero. I was loyal to my country and to the ideals that it stands for, and that is all." And the City of Los Angeles respectfully disagrees. And so it's my honor to present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kretz. Next, I'd like to call upon Council District Six, represented by Council Member Nuri Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Kretz, that was beautiful.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. A native of New York, Michael Guerra is a 44-year resident of Sun Valley. For the past 12 years, Mike has been a volunteer with the Sun Valley Neighborhood Council, and is currently serving as its Planning and Land Use Chairperson. He and his wife of 54 years, Barbara, yes, 54, can we please, Barbara, please stand up. 54 years of marriage to Mike. Are the proud parents of three sons who graduated from Poly High School in Sun Valley, and went on to become an elected Superior Court Judge, a college professor, and an Emmy Award-winning Associate Director of televised sports. Yes, that's very impressive. Good job, Barbara. Mike joined the United States Navy the day after he turned 17. He was trained as an aviation electric, electrics technician in the Navy Air Wing, and was assigned to the Navy Patrol Squadron Two as an air crew member in a Lockheed P-2V7, a unique patrol plane with two propeller engines and two jet engines. He was deployed with the squadron flying out of Japan, and patrolling the Russian coast for seven, seven months before his assignment. After his deployment, he was reassigned to a heavy attack bomber squadron, and was deployed on the aircraft carrier Bonhomme Richard, back to the Western Pacific Ocean, with stops in Guam, multiple ports in Japan, Hong Kong, Singapore, Malia, and on a Bombay, and on to Bombay, India. Back to the States a few months later for honorary discharge. Upon discharge, he was hired and traveled worldwide as a light, lighting director for the Icecapades, where he met his skater wife, Barbara. Six years later, Mike arrived in Los Angeles in 1966, and intended on pursuing a career in television production. His career spanned 38 years with such well-known companies as CBS, KCET, and Paramount Television. He was a key member of the production team that launched Entertainment Tonight and Hard Copy. He had a final 10-year stint as executive in charge of production for Entertainment Tonight until he retired in 2004. Retirement for Mike has been an opportunity to devote himself to actively serving his local neighborhood council. He recognized that he could have a positive impact by focusing on environmental stewardship, and was dedicated countless hours to addressing the environmental impacts on the Sun Valley neighborhoods and its surrounding neighborhoods as well. Mike served on the LADWP Recycle Water Advisory Committee, as well as LADWP One Water 2040 Plan since its inception. Mike has received, has served as an executive, on the Executive Committee for the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils for the past six years, and also has been on the Advisory Council of Los Angeles Plan Check for four years. In his 12 years on the Sun Valley Neighborhood Council, he has served in every position on the Executive Board, and has been the Chairperson of their Planning Committee for the past seven years. I am extremely proud to honor my good friend, Michael Guerra, today, as he is an example of just what Sun Valley has to offer, but not only my community of Sun Valley, but my entire district and the city of Los Angeles. His tireless dedication and devotion to volunteerism is truly commendable, and I am so proud and excited to give him this honor today. I've worked with Mike over the past several years as a school program member, and now as a city councilwoman. I want to also take the time to applaud, and have Barbara stand up one more time. Thank you so much, my friend, for your dedication and your volunteer hours to the Sun Valley community, but also for sharing Mike with us in the community of Sun Valley and in my district. We are very, very honored to call you friends of our office. So thank you, Mike, for your service, and thank you for being my friend.
Thank you. And now, presenting the Veteran of the Year for Council District Seven, Council Member Monica Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. And before I begin to introduce my honoree, that I'm so, I'm so honored that he came down to join me in council chambers today. There are so many veterans that have given to our country in service. And as the daughter of a Marine and a green card veteran, I will tell you that it makes me especially proud, on a day like today, to be able to honor each and every one of you for representing each of the districts and the communities that you live in. Because the sacrifices that you made, and the sacrifices of your family, live on in our history books. And it's a special honor to me today to be able to present and recognize our honoree today. But what I want to say with special thanks to, to those men and women that served in the Vietnam era, I want to welcome you home, and thank you for your service.
It is with great, great honor and pride that today I present our, my honoree, Sam Reiner, a 70-year resident of the Sun Valley community. Sam is a World War II US Marine veteran with two Purple Hearts. Semper Fi, Sam.
Hurrah!
At the, at the age of 19, in January 1943, he enlisted in the US Marine Corps. In December of 1943, he boarded a ship headed to the headquarters of the Pacific Asiatic Campaign as a rifle sharpshooter. On July 7, 1944, his squad was engaged in an intense firefight, where Sam was injured by a sniper's bullet. The bullet had passed through him less than a centimeter from his spine. He returned to combat as a stretcher bearer, transporting the wounded to medical ships just offshore. He fought in one of the fiercest battles in the Pacific at Pelulu Island. Pelulu Island. After returning home, he married his high school sweetheart, Lilian, and they were married for 61 years until her death. At the age of 89, he married his wife, Donna, and they have been happily married ever since. And I, I have to say, I first met Sam and Donna at the Armenian Cultural Festival more than a year ago. And it was because he was wearing his Marine Corps hat, and I said Semper Fi, and we engaged in conversation. But he and his wife Donna are very deeply in love, and they act more like newlyweds than any other newlywed I've ever seen before. And it's, and it's special inspiration that both you and Donna are here today, because I'm also celebrating my 20-year wedding anniversary today. And you both are an example of such wonderful light and love. But it's with deep gratitude that we honor your incredible service and commitment to our country. And I thank you so much for joining us today. I thank you so much for being a resident here in the city of Los Angeles, and we are deeply indebted to you for your service. Thank you very much, Sam.
All right, we're going to skip out of order for a moment, and we're going to go next to Council District Ten, and call upon the Council President. Actually, you know what, Mr. President? Sorry.
That's okay. I work for you, Mr. Krikorian.
We're ready to go with Council District Eight. Representing Council Member Harris Dawson today, Council Member Martinez is going to present our Veteran of the Year for Council District Eight.
Sorry about the glitch in the program.
Not at all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian. I'm very honored by our honoree from Council District Eight. Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson couldn't be here today, but he asked me to do him the honor in presenting his honoree this morning. She also happens to be the only woman veteran that is being honored today, so congratulations. And her name is Patricia Jackson Kelly. She is a veteran of the United States Air Force Army and Navy Reserve. She retired with the rank of Lieutenant Colonel after 26 years of combat, active duty, and reserve services. Lieutenant Colonel Jackson Kelly most recently served as a Program Manager for a 40-bed substance abuse ward with the Department of Veterans Affairs in West Los Angeles. During her employment, she was instrumental in implementing programs, funds, and resources for women veterans. Currently, she serves in several volunteer capacities, including the Foundation for Women Warriors, a Commissioner to the County of Los Angeles for Military and Veteran Affairs, the California Women Veterans Leadership Council, as the Department of California Women Veterans Outreach Coordinator, as the Vice President of Operations for National Association of Black Military Women, and for the past, and was a past National Director of 20 and 4, the Honorary Society for Women Legionaries. Lieutenant Colonel Jackson Kelly has received awards and commendations from President George W. Bush, California Governor's Office, the California Department of Veteran Affairs, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and various other community organizations. Most recently, recently, she was elected as the Home and United Methodist Church Quiet Champion in 2017, and Ford's Unsung Hero Award in 2015. She is currently married to George Kelly, who is also a Korean War veteran. George is also active in the community by providing various services to his community. The pair have one son, Kyler, and four beautiful grandchildren, Kai, Jalen, Jaren, and Jacob. The city of Los Angeles, and on behalf, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, and on behalf of Council Member Harris Dawson, I am very proud to recognize you for your exemplary service to the United States. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. All right, Mr. President, now we'll go to Council District Ten, for, represented by our Council President Herb Wesson.
Are you sure, Mr. Krikorian?
I am certain.
All right. Anyway, let's just give all of our veterans a round of applause. All of them. You know, this is a very special time for all of us, and it's a special time for me personally. Where it relates to all of us, we want to thank you for your service to this great nation. And because of you, so many of us were able to just go on and live our lives and not worry about wars or anything like that, because we knew that you guys were there protecting us and protecting our country. So I just want you to know that as a son of a veteran, that I'm very appreciative to your service. Another reason why, Mr. Krikorian, this day is such a special day, or this time is such a special time, is because my birthday is on Veterans Day. So I will be celebrating being 39-years-old for like the last 20-something years. I want to take a moment, though, I have a special guest just walked in, a person that we know in my district and community, as the Crenshaw Cowboy, who enlisted a long time ago in the service. He's an artist, his name is Levell Moore, he's in the back. Give Levell a round of applause. If you guys drive, if you drive on Crenshaw Boulevard by the 10 freeway, you'll see him, and you'll see his artwork. But members, so many times, we go to work every day, and we really don't talk to folk the way that we should. And we have a hidden gem that serves among us, that I didn't know until recently. And we have a hidden gem that serves among us that I didn't know until recently. An individual that, in the late '70s, joined the Marines. He got clearance to the point where, top-secret clearance, because he was a dispatcher and in charge of the ordnance and bombs. He then became a city employee. In 1990, he was a security guard. He then became a peace officer. And that's our own sergeant, who has been with us, protecting us for four years, Al Just like we know the sun's going to come up and go down, as we know Al is going to be here protecting us every day. Now, throughout his service, so he went from security guard, police officer, to Los Angeles, I mean, peace officer, to Los Angeles police officer, and he has received numerous commendations. But the guy that is standing to my right, what I didn't know, is during an evacuation of one of our buildings, that Al carried a disabled employee down 11 flights of stairs. That's the man that is standing to my right. That's the man that I want to honor. So, it is, you know, I know that we sometimes can be difficult to protect. But we really, every member around this horseshoe, and every city employee appreciates not just your service to this great country, but your service to the greatest city on the planet. You've got your commander here to witness this, and Chief Gramala was here earlier. So, let's give Al one more round of applause. Thank you for your service. And, Mr. Kokorian, we, this is the first time he's come in this building and been surprised. So, we surprised Al today.
Well done, well done. Thank you, Al. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to next call upon Council Member Mike Bonin to present the Veteran of the Year for Council District 11.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian, and thank you, as always, for doing this incredible event every year. Waiting for the slide for my honoree. There we go. Okay, so, this year, I'm honoring Floyd Chad Mashad. You may notice that the gentleman standing next to me bears very little resemblance to the person who is photographed up above. We've had a number of veterans here who are celebrating milestone anniversaries. Chad is actually recently married for the first time and is enjoying his honeymoon right now and wasn't able to be here today, but his friend and colleague, Bill Morgan, is here to accept the award on his behalf. Floyd, or Chad, as he's known, is an incredible person who has made as much of an impact after being in the service as when he was in the service. He gave distinguished service in the military, and then he's dedicated his life towards making life better for those who have served in the military. When I was a kid, I remember reading about what we used to call shell shock. I remember seeing photos of World War I veterans and the captions talked about shell shock. And that was still a term that was used even into the 1970s and maybe into the 1980s. And Chad is one of the people who was instrumental in identifying and naming and accepting and treating post-traumatic stress syndrome. In 1985, he founded an organization called the National Veterans Foundation. Actually, back then, it was called the Vietnam Veterans Foundation. It was later changed because its scope grew so much. And since then, they have helped more than 400,000 veterans and their families with crisis and information services through National Crisis Hotline and through storefront services. Chad is a U.S. Army psychologist and was a medical service officer in Vietnam in 1970. And at that time, that's when his interest in what later became known as PTSD developed. He pioneered treatment techniques at that time for what would later be known as PTSD. He worked under the Carter administration with VA Secretary and later U.S. Senator Max Cleveland, and established then the Veterans Administration's Vet Center Program, which was modeled on Chad's treatment programs with community-based readjustment counseling. Today, there are more than 300 such vet centers throughout the country, and they continue to operate under Chad's model, offering readjustment services to veterans of the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, and it's one of the most effective service models the VA operates. The storefronts are away from the VA, so folks who have issues with the VA can go in and feel comfortable and get the services they need. Chad, who's also a licensed clinical social worker, remains one of America's most sought-after experts and counselors on combat stress, on trauma therapy, and readjustment issues confronting returning military veterans and their families. So, here to accept the award on his behalf today is Bill Morgan, who's the Development Director of the National Veterans Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Next, we'll go to the Veteran of the Year for Council District 13, and Council Member O'Farrell could not be with us here today, but he asked that I step in for him. So, I'd like to ask our Veteran of the Year for Council District 13, Robert Berg, to join me at the podium. So, Robert Berg joined the California Army National Guard in 1962, shortly after he graduated from John Marshall High School, Mr. Rue. He was promoted to the rank of Sergeant, and he was encouraged by his company commander to attend OCS at the California Military Academy, where he graduated with honors in 1968. Throughout his career, Robert took on many military assignments that really were very important to the people of Southern California. As an active member of the National Guard, he participated in disaster-related operations, including the Watts Riot in August of 1965, wildland fires, floods, earthquakes, mass evacuations, search and rescue operations, and even security for the space shuttle landing at Edwards Air Force Base. He moved up and served as Infantry and Armor Company Commander as a battalion and division-level staff officer assignments, and was even the aide to two major generals, division commanders who were major generals. In 1985, after 23 years of service under his belt, Robert retired as a Major Provost Marshal. During his service, Robert was awarded the Army Commendation Medal with four oak leaf clusters, the Armed Forces Reserve Medal with silver hourglass, in addition to many other awards, medals, and distinguished unit citations. And then, upon the end of his service, and actually even during his service, he continued to serve the community in a variety of other ways as well. He was the Elysian Valley Riverside Neighborhood Council Board Member from 2011 to 2013. He served on the Elysian Valley Neighborhood Watch Program for eight years. He was part of the Elysian Valley Arts Collective's Frog Town Art Walk Program for six years, the Elysian Valley Community Garden Project for over six years, and importantly, worked for the Mayor's Office Crisis Response Team, which all of us have had to call upon from time to time, usually in very difficult times. He served in that difficult job for five years as well. And it's worth noting, a proud Trojan as well, having graduated from USC with a Master's in Public Administration in 1975. So, Robert, thank you very much for your service to our country, both in uniform and in our community, and congratulations on being the Veteran of the Year for Council District 13. All right, and moving on to the Veteran of the Year for Council District 14, Council Member Wezar could not be with us today as well, so he's asked that I substitute for him. So, it's a great honor for me, if you'll join me, Mr. Gomez, if you'll join me here. It's a great honor for me to be able to recognize the Veteran of the Year for Council District 14, Mr. Apollonio Gomez. Mr. Gomez is 93-years-young and part of the Greatest Generation. We've recognized a number of World War II veterans today, and it's really a great privilege to be able to have Mr. Gomez here with us. He's part of that generation that survived the Great Depression and helped rebuild our country and its aftermath. He fought and supported the country and liberty and democracy throughout the world in fighting in World War II, and then came home and selflessly helped to build the country that we all get to enjoy and live in now. Mr. Gomez served in the United States Army during World War II, and at the age of 20, he found himself engaged in two of the war's deadliest and most recognized conflicts, the Normandy Invasion and the Battle of the Bulge. His presence here today gives us all the opportunity to thank him and all of our World War II veterans, including the many who lost their lives at those two battles and in other important conflicts throughout the years. In 2017, only about half a million of the 16 million Americans who served... Only about a half million of the 16 million Americans who served during World War II are still with us. So, days like today are extremely important to thank Mr. Gomez and all of our World War II veterans for their service, and both in uniform and in helping to build the country that we enjoy today. Infantryman Apollonio Gomez is also an example that America's armed forces was and continues to be as diverse as its population. Latino soldiers from communities like El Sereno, where Mr. Gomez lives, are the rule and not the exception in honorable service to our great country. They served disproportionately in the military. And our Latino veterans, we owe a special debt of great gratitude to. Mr. Gomez's service to his community even continues today at the age of 93. He and his wife of 67 years, Aurora, who's with us as well, 67 years, they both continue to volunteer at the El Sereno Senior Center, a very active group of seniors who host a number of events throughout the year, and they're really very active in supporting our senior and greater El Sereno community. So, on behalf of Council Member Wezar and all of us, we're very, very grateful to be able to recognize our Veteran of the Year for Council District 14, Mr. Apollonio Gomez. It's a great honor. All right, and last, but certainly not least, I'm going to call upon the only council member among us who actually represents a United States Navy battleship to present the... To present the Veteran of the Year for Council District 14, 15, Council Member Joe Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. Kokorian. And you remind me that we pride ourselves in the Harbary community to be one of the largest military communities in all the state of California. And we have an opportunity every year during Fleet Week to recognize our servicewomen and men who really have contributed to serving that United States of America flag, the largest, the greatest symbol of freedom. And it's with great pleasure and joy that I recognize Howard Hagan, our Veteran of the Year. And to show this man's heart, as Mr. Gomez was struggling, very emotional, Mr. Hagan walked over to his comrade, gave him a hug, and talked him through that entire presentation. And it shows his love and commitment to his brothers and sisters who have served in our military. He started his military service in the California National Guard in 1963. He completed basic training at Fort Ord and then went on to Fort Sill, Oklahoma, for artillery training. He was then assigned to the National Guard, where he served for three years. Howard was honorably discharged from the National Guard in 1966, but shortly called back to active duty in the United States Army, where he would eventually be deported to Shering Valley, Vietnam. The gun truck he was assigned to during his time in Vietnam, called the Eve of Destruction, is the only gun truck that survived the Vietnam War and returned to the United States. And it now sits at the Army Transportation Museum in Virginia. For his service, Howard was awarded the Army Commendation Medal with a V device, which distinguishes heroism, the National Defense Service Medal, the Republic of Vietnam Campaign Ribbon with device, and the Vietnam Service Medal with one Bronze Star for his service in Vietnam. Just before we began, counsel, he reminded me how many of the men who went to Vietnam entered Vietnam with a red heart, a heart filled with pride and joy, but left Vietnam with a black heart because they lost so many men during the battle. Even after his formal service ended with the United States Army in 1969, Howard continued to dedicate his time and leadership with our Wilmington community. In 1999, he joined Veterans of Foreign Affairs, Post 2967, in Wilmington, and became a Life Member in 2003, where he served as the Entertainment Chairman for three years and as an All-State Post Commander for four years. In 2016, he transferred to Lamita, where he now serves as the Post Trustee and on the House Committee. He also held positions at the department level. At the national level, Howard was aide-de-camp for seven years and was on both the General and National Service Resolution Committee. In 2012, Howard was elected to the High Office of State Junior Vice Commander, Department of California, and in 2014, he was elected to the High Office of State Commander for the Department of California. Howard was employed by the PMA as a longshoreman for 13 years, starting in 1963, and in 1976, he was promoted to foreman until his retirement in 2003. He was also a police reserve officer for 13 years, working Uniform Patrol. More than 13, correction. How many years total? About 15 years. Working Uniform Patrol and with the gang unit. He and his wife, Frances, of 47 years, are lifelong residents of Wilmington. I do see Barbara, who's here, Wilmington resident, a proud resident. And they have three daughters, one of which is here joining us, Romi, Wendy, who is in active service with the United States Army, and Tracy. They have a total of five grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. So, Howard, we love you. We thank you for your service to our great country and our city, and we are honored to recognize you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Buscagno. Mr. President, I apologize. Mr. Buscagno was not last. I unfortunately missed Council District Nine, so I apologize for that. But I'd like to call upon Council Member Curran Price, representing the New Ninth.
Thank you, Councilor Kokorian. And we appreciate, again, your leadership, and just thank you to all the veterans who we're celebrating today. It's such a tremendous sacrifice that you've made so that we could live peaceably. I did not have the honor of serving. Certainly, I had family members and friends who did. So, again, my hat is off to you, and we thank you for your service. Today, it's my honor to recognize George Pruitt, a 92-year-old veteran. That's right, just go for George. A little under the weather, couldn't be with us today, but we just wanted to salute his service. He served in World War II, was in service for four years, left the service as a private first class, served in the South Pacific, Philippines, New Guinea, had an honorable discharge, and now volunteers at the Van Meter Senior Center in my district. And so, again, just... And so again, just demonstrating how our veterans continue to be veterans. And even in their advanced ages, have not forgotten the importance of giving back and supporting our community. And so I just want to, again, acknowledge the extraordinary contributions that all of our veterans have made and the recognition we provide today. And a special shout-out to our honoree in District Nine, Mr. George Pruitt. And we are honored to be here today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. And members, as we bring today's recognition to a close, I'm really pleased that so many of us were able to identify World War II veterans to be able to bring in here and recognize. It means a great deal to me, as the son of a combat veteran of World War II, Rick Krikorian, who served in the Marine Corps with Sixth Marine Division. This means a lot to me. And as we recognize our veterans, I have... My dad never talked about the war, except to tell funny stories. He never told anything bad about the war, just funny things that happened and screwy things that happened. That was about all he would talk about. But one of my most treasured possessions that I own is this canteen that he was wearing during the Battle of Okinawa, when a Japanese bullet penetrated it while it was on his hip. And I look at that bullet hole and think about what that means, what that three inches of directional change would have meant to my family. If this had been over here instead of over here, I would not be standing with you here today. He would not have come home. And I raise that because all of these veterans who are here with us today, their names are not engraved in granite on memorials, but they could have been. Every single one of them was prepared to pay that price, if need be, for our country. Every single one of them sacrificed, even in peacetime service, were also at risk and at danger in serving our country. And so we owe them so much, and I really appreciate, members, all of you, for giving us this opportunity to be able to recognize them. And I'd like to ask also, as we recognize our honorees today, if we could take a moment to recognize all of our city employees and all of the other veterans who are present here, if they could just rise and raise their hand so that we can all recognize you, our great veterans of the United States military. Happy Veterans' Day, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to ask the members and the veterans to join us in the horseshoe, if I may, for a group picture.
Okay, let's recess for a couple of moments while we take this photo.
have been circulated and are before Council.
Okay, can we prepare to vote on those items? Okay, so we still have to take public comment. I'm going to recognize Mr. Bonin to begin making his way. And in a couple of moments, Mr. Bonin, I'm sure we can begin with your very important presentation as well.
have been circulated and are before Council.
Okay, can we prepare to vote on those items? Okay, so we still have to take public comment. I'm going to recognize Mr. Bonin to begin making his way. And in a couple of moments, Mr. Bonin, I'm sure we can begin with your very important presentation as well.
Should we take up our visitor?
Yeah, hide it down here.
Other one to you. No, you two bring it.
Can I remember Commerce Mar Vista Art Walk?
Not me.
Other one to you. No, you two bring it.
Can I remember Commerce Mar Vista Art Walk? I've lost, and I just want to say, um, but then we need to talk about something together.
The Art Walk together, yeah.
Then we have the Art Walk slide on there, and it's always the other.
Yeah, yeah.
It's safe to stand next to me.
No, I got it.
Mr. Bonin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, and good morning, colleagues. Since I took office a few years ago, I've had the pleasure of celebrating some milestone anniversaries for communities in my district. When I first took office, I had the opportunity to celebrate a milestone birthday for Brentwood. Last year, I got to celebrate a milestone birthday for Westchester. And today, I get to celebrate ninety years of Mar Vista being part of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. It wasn't always part of Los Angeles, and it wasn't always called Mar Vista. As we know, this land was home to the Gabriolinos for centuries, and then after conquest, it was divided up by families and land grants and developers. And a little more than ninety years ago, it was known as Ocean Park Heights. And eventually, the community decided to join Los Angeles, becoming the seventieth community to join the city of Los Angeles, to be annexed, and renamed itself Mar Vista. Back then, it was bean fields, maybe about five thousand people. Today, it sure ain't bean fields, and it's got about sixty thousand people, the largest of the eleven communities I represent. It is an interesting and a fascinating community with an interesting history. When we think of the Civil War, we don't necessarily think of Mar Vista. But Mar Vista is known and sort of shaped by its hill. And the hill, from the hill in Mar Vista, the hilltop, you can see the Pacific Ocean, and you can see the rest of Los Angeles. And in eighteen sixty-two, Union soldiers were stationed on that hilltop, looking out for a potential or feared Confederate invasion from Catalina. It never materialized. But interestingly enough, when they were stationed on that hill, they did not use horses or mules, they were actually stationed on camels. I bet nobody knew that one. I found that one out myself, my own research. Staff did not give me the camel detail. But the name Centinela comes from the fact that it was a sentinel point and a sentry point looking out in that war. In World War II, the Army anti-aircraft folks were stationed up there because it was very close to Douglas Aircraft, and they were stationed there to ward off potential Japanese bombs, which of course never arrived, but that was up at the hill near Rose Avenue. In nineteen oh one, my understanding is the first home was built, it's still there, Grand View and Charnock. And on Grand View, which is this beautiful wide boulevard just east of Centinela, there are these big, huge homes. And during prohibition, they were speakeasies. And it had, what I'm told from my research, some of the finest liquor in all of Los Angeles. There also was, at the time, one of those homes was a brothel. I am not, for the sake of the real estate value, going to give out the address. But at the time, Mar Vista was also a place where a lot of filming was done. The Little Rascals did roller derby down Grand View, Laurel and Hardy filmed a couple movies there, and it was sort of the place to be. It was also, sort of in contrast to the speakeasies and the Hollywood shoots and the other stuff I talked about, it was also one of the Mormon capitals of Los Angeles. A lot of the streets have names that the Mormons brought, Wasatch and Boise and McCune. McCune was one of the founders of the Mormon Church here in Los Angeles. And they actually considered building their temple, which is now in CD5 on Santa Monica Boulevard, in Mar Vista. There is a Mormon church there now, and the hill that was that sentry point was known as Mormon Hill, and it still has a good-sized Mormon population. In more recent times, Mar Vista has gained an entirely different feel and an entirely different flavor. When I first started working, serving Mar Vista with Ruth Galanter back in the nineteen nineties, nobody really knew in the city of Los Angeles where Mar Vista was. It was divided between two council districts. Ruth represented the southern part, and Marvin Browdy, the northern part. And folks sort of looked at it as the place that you drove through to get to Venice Beach. Well, boy, over the past twenty years, that has changed a lot, largely because of some of the people who are joining me here today from Mar Vista. And we actually have some slides of Mar Vista to show as I talk. I forgot to key that up a little bit earlier. Mar Vista, over the past twenty years, largely because of an amazing farmer's market that kicked off eleven years ago, eleven years ago, became home to a whole new feel. A community that was aging suddenly was home to young families with thriving youth sports leagues. Venice Boulevard, which is our great street, has been the home to a resurgence of a business community, some of the hottest restaurants in Los Angeles, the Mar Vista, to name one, right there in the heart of Mar Vista, a growing Chamber of Commerce, home to an incredible art walk that happens every few months, that has brought life and flavor and food and music and all sorts of art to downtown Mar Vista. Mar Vista also was home, I think, to one of the more grassroots environmental neighborhood movements in Los Angeles. About ten years ago, Sherry Akers and the Mar Vista Community Council's Green Committee started a green garden showcase. And when Sean and I got married and decided it was time to have kids, we decided to move in to Mar Vista, because it's a great place to raise a family. But I'll tell you, there was some peer pressure. The peer pressure when you move into Mar Vista is to rip out your grass and zero-scape your lawn and put in sustainable landscaping. And we did. So now I'm safe to have Sherry come over to the house. So an amazing community, always changing and full of incredible life now, getting whole new generations of folks from the tech community moving in as well. There have been some famous citizens in Mar Vista's history: Lloyd Bridges, Jerry West, John Wooden, Jerry Buss, Fatty Arbuckle, Nathan Pratt, and Stacy Peralta, for those who are not familiar, part of the Dogtown and Z-Boys, the original famous skateboarders who skateboarded through pools all over the west side in Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley in the nineteen seventies. Also now home to Milo Ventimiglia, who's one of the stars of This Is Us on NBC and the television show Heroes back from ten years ago or so. An amazing community. We have some celebrations planned to celebrate Mar Vista, and so I'm going to ask a few folks to preview what the celebrations are. First, let me ask Lorraine Wells, who's one of the founders of the farmer's market, to talk about what they've got planned.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this. Excuse me, please. I just want to say that it has been an unbelievable, successful story to have the farmer's market on Grand View and Venice. And we're now into our eleventh year. It is a place where the community comes almost every single Sunday. And this coming Sunday, we will be celebrating the ninetieth year of Mar Vista at the farmer's market. So, thank you.
Nine AM to two PM, Venice and Grand View, walk, bike, skateboard, drive, however you want to get there, it's an amazing experience. Let me also ask Lenore French from the Art Walk and Sarah Oswald from the Chamber of Commerce to talk about the Make It Mar Vista Art Walk and what's coming up as part of their celebration.
Hello, I'm Lenore French, and I am the organizer of the Mar Vista Art Walk, and this... I'd like to introduce my colleague.
Hi, I'm Sarah Oswald, and I'm the founding president of the Mar Vista Chamber of Commerce, and we have an event we're working on together coming up.
Yes, we're very excited because the Art Walk, which will be entering its third year of operation, is a fun, free celebration of all of the arts. It's a quarterly event, but this... And so we've had, let's see, we'll be entering, this will be our ninth Art Walk. We're having this joint event on Small Business Saturday this year, November the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mike. A little warning would have been nice, but I'll do the best I can. Yes, I was one of the founders of the Mar Vista Community Council, that was 15 years ago, and we were one of the first neighborhood councils to be certified. And last night, actually, at the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners meeting, we were awarded our 15-year certificate, and I was asked to give an anecdote there, so I have one actually in the brain here, of our very first agenda item, I think, as a neighborhood council, which lasted for a number of years. And people talk about how neighborhood councils are only advisory. And we took that to heart, and I agree that neighborhood councils are only advisory, but just to give you an idea of some of the things that you can advise on as a neighborhood council, and we did, the Playa Vista project was being built on the Biona wetlands well over 15 years ago, they were trying to get their planning permits, and I was actually in this chamber and spoke a number of times on behalf of the Mar Vista Community Council, as we were very concerned about the traffic impacts of that project. You've probably heard that discussion about traffic impacts of this development or that, but Playa Vista is an entire city. And Mr. Bonin was actually standing behind the chair of first Cindy Misakowski, one time when I spoke, or two or three, first Ruth Galanter, I'm sorry, then Cindy Misakowski, and then Bill Rosendahl. So, Mike is still young enough to have memories of seeing me at this microphone. And it's been a long road, but just one thing about that project, it was planned to be 17-story buildings throughout the Biona wetlands, it is now four-story buildings throughout the Biona wetlands. As our council so correctly pointed out, we would not be able to see the Loyola sign from Mar Vista Hill if it was 17 stories, and I think that was a key factor in convincing the developers and the planning commission to downsize the size of those buildings. So maybe we only have a third as much traffic coming through our neighborhood now as we would have.
So, when I was a field deputy, Tom often called me up without notice and put me on the spot, so this is what we call sweet revenge, my friend. I just want to acknowledge to the other folks who are with us, standing behind me is Chuck Ray, used to serve on the community council, now back on it, lost his marbles and decided to do another stint. Without Chuck, this city would not have a DWP ratepayer's advocate. He was one of the early, early advocates and forces for that, who would not let that go, and worked very closely with Jan Perry and Mayor Garcetti and Wendy Grule to make that happen. And I also want to acknowledge Mariana Lem from the Mar Vista Neighbors Association, who works for H-Cid here in the city of Los Angeles, so thank you both for being here.
Mr. Bonin, let me recognize Mr. Corretts.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to thank you for bringing this forward and acknowledge that I represent about an inch and a half of Mar Vista. So I only occasionally come to community events just to remind people that I represent the inch and a half that I do.
You're welcome to come whenever there's a controversial matter. The next board meeting is when, Chuck?
Next Tuesday.
Those I think I have the ability to avoid. I lived briefly in Mar Vista in the 1980s and met my wife as a Mar Vista resident, and I still play softball at Mar Vista Park, and I still bowl at what used to be Mar Vista Bowl, I think it's now called Bolero of Mar Vista. So a lot of connections, it's a great community. I would love to live there, except I'd have to move outside of my district, so probably not. But thank you for bringing this forward, an amazing first 90 years, and I look forward to the next 90, and I will be here at the next 90th anniversary.
Back to you, Mr. Bonin.
Thanks, Mr. President. To wind this up, when he retired, the community presented to Mr. Rosendahl this Mar Vista sign, which he kept and proudly had in his home, and in acknowledgement of the 90th birthday, I am presenting this back to the community, to the community council, and saying happy
Mr. Clerk, why don't we recess and go into the special?
birthday and looking forward to the rest of the celebrations.
Give him a round of applause, 90 years young.
Very good, sir. Blumenfeld, Vana Buscagno, Sardia, under Harris, Sassenwieser, Carrasco, Quin, Martinez, Ferrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present, sir.
Okay, now what's before us?
Mr. President, that takes us to item 38, it's an item for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that's before us, and are these the cards in front of me, so I, I'm going to call up Mr. Eric Previn, Mr. Joel Luis Torres, if you'd come up, please, Mr. Walsh, if you're here.
If y'all don't mind, I'm just going to make my general public comment, because I was waiting, and now I have to go somewhere.
We haven't gotten there yet, but I tell you what I'll do, once we finish with this item, we'll go back to the regular agenda, and then I'll call you. So give me a couple of minutes. So if we could get, who's Mr. Previn or Mr. Walsh?
Did you say that it was item 13?
No, 38, and we're in the special meeting.
Yeah. Okay, 38, thank you, sir. This is in Corretts's district, and this is the final track map on West Pico Boulevard, lying to the west of Robertson. And it's in a special meeting configuration, because it was a 24-hour notice, which means that this is also the last stage of these approvals, when the map is finally published. So that's the reason why you don't see any Angelinos down here to speak on it. The reason why it's been put on the special meeting is unclear, maybe it's because Veterans Day is coming up on Friday, we don't know. But traditionally, we've had some disagreements about whether or not people can speak at special meetings, and as you know, they can, because the Brown Act provides that a speaker may address any item that is on an agenda.
Which is about the final map.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. Okay, this is an issue about maps. Be very careful, you should, everybody out there who owns property, check your map, because these things go through, and all of a sudden, residential, where you live, becomes commercial. And then they start buying property around you, or they put up high-rises. The maps are very, very important. You can take your 20 seconds back.
Okay, Mr. Herman, on item 38 in the special.
In reference to maps, in order for the city engineer to adopt the reports, I'd like to remind the city how, at one point, map zones were A-OK. Now we have a whole body of confusion as to how these map zones changed and made considerable outcry by the public, but no one wants to talk about that, because on such agreements, contracts, and bonds, you have violated California Constitution of free assembly to hear the protests and declare negative zonings against the DW foo, who was, one time I looked at official, one and only, Mr. Bonbon, Tom Labange, who destroyed hundreds...
Thank you, Mr. Herman, thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's send this forthwith. In fact, why don't we send it super urgent forthwith? So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, so Mr. Clerk, I guess it would be all right for us to adjourn and then return to the regular meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I'd like to go to general public comment, get Mr. Torres, like I told you I was going to do, so you could come up and speak on your general public comment.
My name is Joel Luis Torres. Like I've said, I've been here before, I'm a resident of Los Angeles for the past 18 years. I really do feel that the community only emphasizes those that have served our country and done something. There's other people that have served and got hurt during training, like myself, and we don't have any respect for, you know, our voice. I feel like the city of Los Angeles has failed me. As I came back from my service, I've been looking for somewhere to live for the past four months, and I haven't found anything. I'm in college, and I haven't had any help trying to buy, I pay for my books, and everywhere I go, I just get appointed to another finger and another person, and I get another card. I have 50 cards, and none of those 50 people have helped me, and I feel like you guys are doing the same by ignoring what the hell I have to say, because you guys don't have any respect, can't even look my way to acknowledge me.
I'm looking at you, Mr. Torres, continue.
But I feel like we should stop, Los Angeles is always going to make money.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Torres, your time's expired, thank you, thank you. No, sit down, Julius, I'll call you. Mr. Buscagno for an introduction.
Mr. President, today in our rotunda, we do want to welcome, and if you have an opportunity from now until 3:00 PM, visit the third-floor rotunda. We are here welcoming Ike Smart City Hub, an interactive kiosk that's focusing on tourism, bringing tourism into our city, but at the same time, very active. We're here with Adam Burke of the LA Tourism Convention Board, and also members of the Ike Smart City Hub, Jabran Sher Mohamad, Adam Burke, as I mentioned earlier, and the CEO of Ike Smart City Hub. Let's give them a warm welcome, you have to give a minute or two, and those listening here in City Hall, head down to the rotunda and really get an opportunity to visit Ike, he's a cool guy, but Mr. Englander was asking if Ike serves cappuccinos, but does not serve cappuccinos, but it is an amazing, you really, through the touchscreen, you can focus on different parts of the city, and also at the same time, bring in tourism and highlights everything from the valley to the west side, to downtown, down to the harbor area. So let's give him a round of applause, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, welcome. Okay, so now I want to call up Michael White, Michael White, you have items 1B through 6, and then general public comment.
The way I understand...
Yes.
The way I understand this is against protesting in the street.
I can't, I didn't hear you.
The way I understand this is against protesting in the street.
Now, you signed up to speak on items 1B, which means you can speak to that item on the agenda, you can speak on item 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and then you have general public comment. If you do not want to speak specifically on those items, we can go to your general public comment now, and you can speak on whatever subject you want, as long as the city has some kind of direct or indirect relationship with that. So do you want to go to your general public comment?
Yes, I do.
Give him his one minute for general public comment.
It's not three minutes?
No, it's not three minutes. No, it's not, you got one minute, you know, you need not to listen to some of the folk that are sitting in the chambers that don't know what they're talking about. General public comment is one minute. If you want to speak specifically on the other items, you can do that. So I've explained it enough, Mr. White, so now you have your one minute for general public comment, so go ahead.
I've been arrested two times here in Los Angeles for selling stuff on the streets, and you should legalize it like New York City and Atlanta and all these other major cities, we're just trying to make a living, and there's so much racism, especially towards black people, where we can't even do nothing on the street while people come from other countries and sell on the street, and they don't even bother them. Nothing against them, but it's what you do to others, and how we have been treated for 400 years in this country, and for 248 years, we didn't even get paid. We worked sunup to sundown, and according to the scriptures in the Bible, it says you're supposed to, a slave, you're supposed to do him six years, the seventh year, let him go. We worked 40, 50, 60 years, and we died, and I can't even sell on the street, I can't get a job at Dodger Stadium. Why don't y'all help these black people, what we've done for this country, including the vets and the Tuskegee Airmen, how they have died, but we don't get no credibility, and all our inventions you took away from us, what are we supposed to do?
Thank you, Mr. White, thank you. Okay, Julius, Julius, come on, you got items 33, 34, and public comment.
Happy birthday, my fjord! I've created oceans of blood to be here with you today.
Julius, items 33 and 34, you can go straight to public comment.
Yeah, I want to do my public comment.
Let's give him his public comment, one minute.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, you know, you can't thank me for my service, you guys talk real pretty, but you treat veterans like shit, I can't even afford decent food. You live, you live by the grace of my balls, my balls should be on Mount Rushmore. Senator Harris murdered those four American heroes in Niger. They died because she's keeping the Tamarindomics truth from the American people. Yeah, you can go to my website, immortalitytoday.org, and you can read about the most important truth in the history of the world that's being kept from you and the rest of the American people. I need the LA City Council to help me bring that truth to the American people, I need your lawyers to work for me, there's nothing more important.
Thank you, thank you, Julius, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Previn, 1B, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, general public comment. And I've been told you can speak to 15 and 21 as well, go ahead.
Yeah, well, 15 is, you want a 12-month option for the city, and $150,000, the developer's going to pay to hire their own environmental person, which I find, I thought that was a big hot-button issue with Measure S, you know, that there should be some independence, I don't know if that's independent, that the developer, you get what you pay for. Item number 15A, I don't have that one in front of me, but look, I want to talk about item number 37, which I know is on the agenda, Jamie McBride, here's a guy who's working...
That item, Mr. Previn, has...
They died because she's keeping the Tamarinomics truth from the American people. Yeah, you can go to my website, immortalitytoday.org, and you can read about the most important truth in the history of the world that's being kept from you and the rest of the American people. I need the L.A. City Council to help me bring that truth to the American people. I need your lawyers to work for me, there's nothing more important.
Thank you, thank you, Julius, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Previn, 1B, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, general public comment. And I've been told you can speak to fifteen and twenty-one as well. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, fifteen is, you want a twelve-month option for the city, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, the developer's gonna pay to hire their own environmental person, which I find, I thought that was a big hot-button issue with Measure S, you know, that there should be some independence. I don't know if that's independent, that the developer, you get what you pay for. Item number fifteen A, I don't have that one in front of me, but look, I want to talk about item number thirty-seven, which I know is on the agenda, Jamie McBride. Here's a guy who's working.
That item, Mr. Previn, has been voted on, so please stick to the items that I...
On the retaliating lawsuit.
Mr. Previn, I gave you the items, do you want to go straight to your general public comment?
No, I'll try to speak on thirty-one briefly, which I'd like to thank Councilmember O'Farrell, who finally agreed to return the money. He returned four thousand penalties and fifty-two hundred on the Massa Borski LLC. This is a different matter where he's providing possible city-owned property to be accommodating for some kind of homeless, possible center in his district. And Mr. Rue is trying the same thing at fourteen oh three North Gardner Street, and I noticed that, he wants to put some kind of women's crisis center up in there, which I think is sensitive and appropriate.
And we've also veered off the agenda item again.
Get on topic, Mr. Previn.
Well, what do you mean? These are city-owned property.
Mr. Previn, get on topic, the city attorney just said you weren't on... You know what, Mr. Previn, give him his minute for general public comment.
Crisis, so when you put city-owned, you play the microphone game, when you put city-owned properties on the agenda to see if they could be used to help us with this crisis, we like to talk about it, okay? And we like to talk about things, and I think David Rue knows, I thought he got elected on a kind of a rights platform, thought this is a guy who doesn't take money from developers, and this is a guy who sat up in Public Safety Committee today along with Joe Buscaino, and along with Monica Rodriguez, who shamefully witnessed what Mitchell Englander did, which was verging on harassment, because he violated the civil rights of public speakers without second hesitation. He did so, he ordered Officer Graciano to remove a public speaker who was seated quietly from the hall. It is an unbelievable abnegation, it's gotta come to an end, and that's why I've notified the district attorney, and sir, you are enabling this man who is not well from, to do this kind of thing, and it's really bad, it's gotta be fixed, and you have to be the one to fix it, sir, because you and Mayor Garcetti are the ones who run this town. You about three hundred and eighty...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Previn. So, Mr. Walsh, you have items twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Mr. Walsh, please come forward.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. Item twenty-seven, rent escrow, you do a good job on that. Vacating, a turning area, all these vacations of areas are for the developer's lease agreement for Sherman Oaks Field Office? No, you need a much smaller field office. Number thirty, onsite parking spaces, park and ride, commuter express transit service, St. Stevens Lutheran Church, separation of church and state. Number thirty-one, North Vermont Avenue for development of a crisis shelter? What the heck is a crisis shelter? I'm in crisis right now, please shelter me. I have no idea what a crisis shelter is, but I'm sure that somebody is going to be making a lot of money renting out the space. Number, redevelopment and community services? The redevelopment agency doesn't exist anymore in Council thirteen. This is a public works conservation corps? To excavate concrete? Please, please. You're not even gonna speak on this, you're not even gonna defend this. Reinstituting the reward offer in the death of Aaron Choice? As I said, you have many hundreds of death reward offers, and you don't have a single arrest. The death of Aaron Choice for an additional six months, might as well make it sixty years, because nobody is going to rat on whoever murdered Aaron Choice, because if they do, whoever rats on Aaron Choice will be shot to death. Everyone knows that. And thirty-four, conviction of persons responsible, that's fifty thousand dollars, it might as well be fifty million dollars, you're never gonna pay it out. And conviction of persons responsible for the death of Clara Grigsby? This is another fifty thousand dollar reward, and it's not going to happen, because no one is going to ever... Why don't you just hand out, why don't you tell us how many people have actually asked for the reward? How many people have given you information leading to the arrest? The answer is zero, and if I'm wrong, you can destroy my credibility now. The answer is nobody has ever collected a reward. Someone tried to collect it, and then you fought them in court and prevented them from correct...
Give him his minute for general public comment.
Okay, last week, the Dodgers lost the series. The Dodgers lost the series. The Dodgers lost the series, but you spent tens of thousands of dollars on a victory celebration, a victory stage out there on the steps of City Hall. You tore it down the next day? I want to know who authorized the huge victory celebration stage, and who paid for it? Now, the county didn't do a dime, they didn't spend a dime, but you spent thousands upon thousands of dollars, and now I want restitution. You should never have set up a stage when you knew that the Dodgers could win or they could lose. The Dodgers lost the pennant, they lost the World Series, the Dodgers lost the series, the Dodgers lost the series, the Dodgers lost the series.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go to item thirteen. On item thirteen, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
And, Mr. President, that ordinance will go over to November twenty-first for a second reading.
Okay, can we move to item fifteen? Do I have some cards on fifteen? Okay, so if I could get Erica Patterson, Chris Espinoza, Kristen Calloca, Michelle Kenman, and Evan Gillespie, please come forward. Just come up and identify yourselves. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, councilmembers. Erica T. Patterson with Jobs Move America and the L.A. County Electric Bus Coalition, speaking in support of electrifying L.A. DOT's bus fleet. As others will share, this transition is going to be an important step towards cleaner air for our environment and communities, but beyond these benefits, we're also very excited that the Transportation Committee is prioritizing jobs and equity in this motion by including the U.S. Employment Plan policy. This will incentivize EV bus makers bidding on city contracts to create good, clean manufacturing jobs for the region. Metro's inclusion of this policy on previous bus and train orders has already transformed the lives of hundreds of families in the county, providing middle-class careers for the reentry population, veterans, single parents, and other people who have faced significant barriers to employment. Thank you, councilmembers Bonin and Weesar for your leadership on this motion, and thank you, councilmembers Coretts and Martinez, for your thoughtful feedback at the Transportation Committee to strengthen this motion, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. My name is Chris Espinoza, and I've been an employee with BYD Lancaster for going on nine months now, and I'm standing here to let you know that, as an employee there, I could tell you that it's been an amazing experience. I got out of the military about a year ago, I was going through the hard transitioning period, it was at some points even very depressing for me and my family, but I'm thankful for what they've done for me and my family, as well as other members of the community. They've allowed us to have an opportunity to have a career, and definitely something to look forward to in life. I hear from my coworkers often, we're very happy that it's providing jobs, like I said, for the local community. We support the zero emissions program that you guys are, that we're trying to go into, and like I said, from BYD Lancaster, we thank you, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
My name is Kristen Calloca, I'm here on behalf of BYD. Good morning, honorable members of the City Council, we're here to express our strong support for a zero emission L.A. DOT bus fleet by 2030 or sooner. BYD is a global manufacturer of electric buses and trucks. We have more than twenty-seven thousand electric buses on the roads around the world. As Chris mentioned, he is an employee at the BYD factory in Lancaster that's located in Los Angeles County. BYD also has its North American headquarters in downtown Los Angeles. We are, you know, we believe that the opportunity to electrify bus transit fleets is now, there is no barrier to putting this technology on our roads today. We currently have four electric buses in service with L.A. DOT through the Downtown Dash service. We've heard nothing but good things about those buses being in service. We just want to remind you that by pushing to electrify the L.A. DOT fleet, you are creating local jobs. Chris is an example of that. We are also, we also have a community...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kenman with Environment California, and a proud member of the Los Angeles County Electric Bus Coalition. And a vote today by council to commit to an all-electric bus fleet would mark a significant commitment by the city towards cleaning our air, fighting climate change, and bringing the economic benefits of our electric future to Angelinos. This commitment, this shift, will take hard work and time, but the climate and air quality imperatives demand that we make this shift. As the 2028 Olympics come closer into view, L.A. has an opportunity to showcase our clean air and climate leadership to the world, and there's no better way to do that than with an all-electric bus fleet powered by clean energy, and so we respectfully ask for your support on this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, my name's Evan Gillespie, I want to thank the honorable City Council members for their support of this motion. I work with them for the Sierra Club, and a one-hundred percent electric bus commitment is a big step for L.A., it's a big step for the state, with L.A. DOT making this commitment, more than one-third of all the buses in California will be on a pathway to electric by 2030. I particularly want to thank the Transportation Committee, Councilmember Bonin, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Coretts for their very thoughtful conversation last week to ensure that if we move to a hundred percent electric buses, that the benefits work for a hundred percent of the people in Los Angeles, so with an emphasis on good jobs and equitable rollout, so communities that are born in the brunt of fossil fuels get these buses first, and that the power behind the buses is clean. It really presents a model legislation for the rest of the country to follow, and I just want to thank Los Angeles again for being a light in this very trying moment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all for coming down. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Mr. Bonin and Mr. Weesar for introducing this critical motion. I think we've all seen in Houston, and Puerto Rico, and Florida, and other Caribbean nations the impact of climate-induced hurricanes, and of course, our wildfires all over California, especially Northern California, and their disastrous impacts. So it certainly points out even more than ever the need to do all of this. I had a chance to tour the BYD electric bus and other vehicle plant in Lancaster here in L.A. County, and it's a city that's already carbon-neutral, amazingly enough, led by their Republican mayor. We see the ability to do this, we need to do it, we want to see it done by 2025 to have a full electric fleet, and most importantly, in a motion that Mr. Bonin and I have introduced, we've asked that we do our best to get out of the contract for forty buses that are natural gas-powered, especially what we've seen in Aliso Canyon and the continuing leaks. We know that is a wrong direction to go in, and so let's get to a completely clean, non-fossil fueled future, and I ask for your vote, both for the motion and for the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Coretts, for your support on this. This is a motion that Mr. Weesar and I brought, and that Mr. Coretts has robustly championed, which was heard in Transportation Committee a couple weeks ago. This is the result of the work of, really of the Electric Bus Coalition, making a movement throughout all of Southern California, and really beyond, to get us off of fossil fuels. L.A. Metro, on the board of which Mr. Corrian and I sit on, recently approved a strategy to get us to a hundred percent fossil fuel-free electric buses at Metro, and this is a parallel direction with that, and gives us a strategy and steps to get there in the city of Los Angeles. This is a city that has always been an environmental leader, this is another step in showing our environmental leadership, and it's an important one. There is an amending motion, colleagues, fifteen A, that just cleans up some of the stuff in committee that wasn't quite clear in the report, so I'd ask that we approve this item as amended. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, I think we want to move to item twenty-six, twenty-one, twenty-one. So, Aracely Alvarez, item twenty-one.
Thank you, City Council of Los Angeles, I'm here on behalf of the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts. My name is Roy Hasso, the board president of the Bilingual Foundation of the Arts, but he said he had to move, had to leave earlier, so we came here just to commend the City Council for selecting the fifteenth group, Lincoln Property, to do the economic development, renovation of the Lincoln Heights jail and its surrounding areas. We were there for thirty-eight years, where we provided theater, bilingual theater, to over two million people, and we look forward in working with you, the development company, and bringing life theater back to this building, to the community, to the city of Los Angeles, and all of Southern California, to enjoy beautiful bilingual theater. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Mr. Herman, you have items 1B, item 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and general public comment.
Fellow distinguished guests, I'm here to speak about item within regards to CD-12, a motion by Mitch Englander on onsite parking regarded as park and ride facilities. Well, you know that most homeless people under HHH don't have recreational vehicles to park and ride in these facilities, so I find them offensive and unconstitutional that you don't have any regard for HHH, the homeless. Then I go to item number thirty-one for the record, under CD-13, regarding the development of a shelter crisis. Well, you heard the young man with the Army accent, the ESL accent, not to mention a few of you with ESL accent.
Stay on the item.
But the gentleman said he's looking for housing, he's looking for shelter, and so was the other gentleman, Mr. Ulysses, in his outcry, he said, "Where are the shelters? Where can I find a place of refuge away from the hard, cold elements of the city of Los Angeles, racism and discrimination? Where can I put my head down to sleep among those who are veterans in America who reside in shelters today? Because we cannot provide our Americans with Section Eight." However, this problem of assessment of this particular site under proposition HHH project expenditure is totally offensive, and for, under the record of forty-two U.S.C. nineteen eighty-three, on behalf of all judges on the Ninth Circuit...
You're off-topic, you might want to go on to another item.
Well, then let's just talk about crime. Let's go into the statistics of how throughout the city of Los Angeles...
What item?
We have, we have six months of un...
What item, Mr. Herman, what item?
I'm on fucking rewards, man.
What item are you on?
I don't have to tell, you told me the number, it's thirty-one, bro.
No, what item are you on?
I'm on thirty-one, bro.
No, okay, Mr. Herman, I asked you a question. You don't want to answer it? Let's give him his minute for general public comment.
Well, fuck you then, Herman, and fuck Ben Ayes, and fuck the cadet program, as I put on my sign, fuck the police, violation of children's rights and psychological evaluations. Well, you got Chief Charlie Beck, who's gonna be sued by Michael Hunt under L.A. CV seventeen zero eight zero sixty-four AG slash E. You got it, rookie? I served Beck, Al, Charles, and that moron, Matthew Johnson, for viol... I served Beck Al Charles and that moron Matthew Johnson for violations of the Brown Act. I serve the city of L.A. and municipal corporation inasmuch and henceforth individual and official capacity to say, "Fuck you white niggers on behalf of the Red Chief." Because you violate his rights, you imprison him, and you did the same to Wayne Spindler. So, fuck you!
Thank you. All right, that concludes the General Public Comment, our multi-comment. What's before this body? Mr. Clerk. Mr. Herman, please be quiet. You're disrupting this meeting. Yes, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, Item 1B is available for you to vote on.
Okay, on Item 1B, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
What else?
Items 2 through 8, sir.
Okay, on those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And that leaves Items 27 through 35.
Let's take those up. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred. Announcements, members, announcements. If all would please rise for adjourning motions. All would please rise for adjourning motions. All, all please... Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, please be quiet. No, no, no. Let me, Mr. Herman, be quiet. You're disrupting the meeting. Stop it. I'm looking to my left, Mr. Buscagino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, you know, here in chambers, oftentimes we reflect and appreciate the work that our interns do for our respective council offices. Well, unfortunately, we mourn the loss of one of my former interns, Alex Zapata. 19-year-old Banning High School graduate who was gunned down at a Halloween party just as he was pushing to succeed in college to work as a community activist aiding students in battling crime. He was an honor student, star soccer player, role model for younger teens. Alex was definitely going places. He died early Saturday when a 14-year-old shot him as he stepped outside a house during a party in Wilmington. Police said a shooter walked up to him and fired multiple rounds. He had a promising future and was determined to finish college. Sophomore at Cal State Fullerton, where he majored in criminal justice with a minor in political science. Definitely breaks my heart and deeply angers me, and this senseless tragedy happened in Wilmington, a community that prides itself on its faith, its family, its hard work, its work ethic. Alex was kind and respectable and was usually in my office early and last to leave. In fact, Jacob reminds me that he wanted to hire him on the spot. He wanted to do right for his community. He could have picked any... He could have picked any job or any meant, any opportunity, but he chose the council office through his leadership with ITEP. So, there's no possible justification for this vicious act, calculated, despicable act of murder, all between two known gangs in Wilmington, West Side and East Side, where the last five years in my office, we're doing everything we can to blur these damn lines. We're tired of it. He was well on his way. We're going to miss him deeply, and our condolences go out to his family, his friends, and the entire Wilmington community. Alex will be laid to rest this Saturday. Please keep him in your thoughts and prayers and the entire Wilmington community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagino. I'm continuing to look to my left. Now, I'm looking to my right, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm sorry, Councilman Buscagino. I mean, it's whenever we see someone too young, go too soon, it's, it's just a tragedy. But Council President, colleagues, I'd also like to adjourn today's meeting to honor one of Hollywoodland's greatest men, Jack Conrad. Jack Conrad was a resident of Hollywoodland since 1974 and a lifelong member of the Hollywoodland Homeowners Association. He fought tirelessly for his community, always striving to make it a better place to live. Hollywoodland today is one of the most recognizable places on earth, yet still remains a close-knit community that cares for one another, thanks in no small part to Jack. Jack was not only a community advocate, he was also a musician, playing in studios with Los Angeles legends like the Beach Boys and the Doors. A true Californian, Jack loved the outdoors. When he wasn't fighting for Hollywoodland, he was with his llamas and his dogs in the Sierra Nevadas. In his community, he was well-known and much-loved, coming to every meeting and project with humor and eloquence, and leaving a lasting impression on all who met him. He is survived by Michelle, his wife of over 40 years, siblings, parents, friends, and neighbors who will always appreciate his legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more adjourning to my right? Okay, again, Mr. Kocorian, thank you for phenomenal presentation. Members, this council meeting is adjourned.